Mother, thank you so much for the needed what you have given us, the beautiful weather that you have given us, and the time to thank our mothers for all that they have done for us. We know that we need to give you those automatic blessings every single day, also for all the things that you do for us. Please be with these young men as they make decisions for our county, and please be with our county employees as they go to and go from work this weekend. We ask all of these things in your son's name, Joseph's name, and I'm not gonna... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
...
I'm gonna give you guys a happy thing. The marriage reports that we have been giving you guys once a month and having you sign off on it, finally, we finally got the okay from the auditors that that is what they want and they will not fight us up anymore for that. But if I'm like doing... They at first said, no, we still want you to do that spreadsheet. I'm like doing... That is just more time. I mean, we already... How about once a week that we do that? We do the warrant register once a month. We do that once a month. And then I go, nope, 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 nope. So finally, we got the okay and we saved our email. And I told them, I said, we hand this out to the divisioners once a month in the monthly officer meetings. They sign up, they see it. We were ecstatic this morning when I came out of that email. This is on a small, 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 and there's just people on my floor. And about four hours, we cannot get internet to me, but nobody can find this. She's a blogger, and I was like, well, maybe she'll retire, but it goes for themselves. That is the one that says that they can't, but it's like $175 a month.
I got it, it never worked. It was costing me that stuff. They wouldn't come look at it, it's terrible. Do you want one? I'm gonna three-year call there. Whatever. My call up, we canceled the general contract. I said, no, you're not, you're not, we're not, we didn't break your contract. We went back real long time on the phone before they finally got somebody calling me on the phone, right?
I just told them that it was not gonna pay them. So, no, they still, they won't let us out of them because it was funded by everybody. And so, I told Lacy to get money to go on there. So if you guys want to add any money, just feel comfortable. It's in the bill. Our hands are tied until 26.
So what did you have everybody do this morning?
A lot of running around, breaking things up. I don't even carve it down the sand, they're great.
Yeah.
Do you have an extra agenda? An extra agenda? Get here. Did you get the one that I marked? After all? No, you have...
You make back the down south some time, like, please?
I did, I did. Except I had some rain and hell right there in Northern Tiquashay. It was bad.
I went back for it behind you, they went through two more slides and let us go.
Made it back right at seven o'clock.
Went to care use graduation Friday night. There was two classmates among them that had kids that was graduating. And they had 50, and there's 48 kids.
Two kids.
Yeah, grad was in, or, or, or... And we were out of there almost on the hour.
What, Cherokee's is that way?
And they had five, the Victorian's did speech, and one, one swoop's went to do a speech. But they did not have a speech. And I had the slideshow. They did not have a rose ceremony, but I had the slideshow. Toby was there, Toby asked why I was there. But I think they were asking why he was there. Next, we saw the student graduating. The chaircase is gonna be outside this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's on the football field.
Just hope the weather stays away for it. Something like it works out.
They still have theirs in the Echo Dome, and they have a nice activity center and a nice auditorium, but they always have graduation in the basketball gym, the Echo Dome, they call it.
That's why they don't have chaircases in their, their dorm gym, because they would seat enough people.
We, uh...
Was it outside last year as well?
Not this year.
They had Nicole's in the gym because they was redoing the seats in the auditorium. But they have justice in the auditorium. And then we saw that Jerry Powell at the Dollar General lunchtime party.
Gosh, I've seen three classmates that hadn't seen him. Jerry, I used to see all the time. Wait a minute, such a church. Tell me that.
Now, it's a part of it, it was set up here. Just have little plates up there. Grab blankets from the sheriff, county general, fairgrounds, Nesta Tango rescue, gent responders, and Cherokee rescue.
All right, Travis, I'm gonna go to the...
No, I have not. Was there, uh, classes?
No, there's not.
Oh, those things, yes.
I'll make a motion, accept the motion. All right. Funding agreement project number, we...
We can do both these, these ones together, because they're all together. The project, um, I mean, this financing also. It's all just one packet. And all three of you sign on both the little orange tickles.
I'll make a motion, get the funding agreement in. Project. All right.
I'll send you a copy of these, the signals on here.
Request a change receiving officer for Engage, Cadet Roberts, for Embry, Reshu. Also have a receiving officer, Man Jones, Celeste, for E911. I'll make a motion, accept the changes. All right. Change order on written quotes for EGC.
This is on the fairgrounds. Um, when they got in there, the sink, the vendor brought up to their attention was not gonna be a good sink. And so, there's, um, there's the $3,000, but it's still within the 15% of the change order. It's only 8.5375%. So we just put, we'll put, as soon as this is approved, we'll put a separate PO on in and get them paid for that. If you guys will just sign anywhere on there. David Bales called me on it, and I said, what do we do?
I'll make a motion, accept the change. All right. Okay, talk to guy on sealed bids for the old hospital lots.
This is what I made the sealed bids to look like. If you guys want to do anything different on them... Oh, I'm about to change my notes on this. I'll change notes on this. This will be out there. I changed it on the other. One, two, three. I made it June 2nd is when they will... No, that's all right. June 9th is when they'll close, and then we'll open them on the 12th. I did not remember to stop it last time we was out there. So it has been in the paper, and we did go ahead and pay that publication. But I had to send this to them early. And then when we decided not to go out for bid on it, I, I forgot, it was my fault, to pull that out of the thing. So we made note on that publication when we paid for it, that it was my error. And we did not go out for bid on it because we didn't have the...
Appraisal.
Thank you, appraisal back. So if you guys will just sign that anywhere there, send them up.
We'll put a PO on for paying David on that appraisal.
Yes, yeah, we put the PO on there when we ordered it. And I think it went through, I think it went through the... If you guys want to add anything to that, um, to help pull up that... And I have made a copy of that appraisal and stuck it, so the girls will remember, because I'll remember, I'll be gone all week. So they have a copy of that appraisal in there. I didn't know whether to charge them for copies of that because that appraisal was thick, or whether we just give it to them. I mean...
Says this will be open May 15.
Okay, do we need to change that? It will be June...
Just sign here at the bottom?
Yep. June 12th, it'll be open those. Then I'll double check those dates. I changed my packet thing, but I didn't change the one that I stuck in here because I wanted, I didn't want to forget to put the packet out there for the girls. And it is in the, it, the publication is to the paper. I am gonna run it for three weeks. If you want to send it to the newsgram, I can. I have not yet. Do you want me to send it to the newsgram? If you'll give me five seconds afterwards, I'll get you a copy of it.
The best two selling points on that lots, when we removed that hospital, we dug it extra deep to get all the foundation out because we figured somebody's gonna want to put a house there. So they shouldn't hit any concrete or foundation when they dig sewer lines or whatever. And that's also out of the flood plain. I don't know if it's...
I would... Anything that makes it a selling point on it.
But we went to extra work to dig all that foundation out and haul it off. Well, I called over here. It was just a little bit, yeah. I know, it's awful hot.
Foundation.
There's so much on the way. Ready for 11:00?
And out.
I can't believe it.
I'll die.
I'll make a motion. These next three.
Yeah.
Resolution to dispose of per district two. I'm expecting 16, 17.
You can use a backhoe attached for rich cases.
I can dig faster with a shovel.
I hear ya.
I like the tree saw.
Yeah, I kept that, that backhoe attached about working.
How our budget has went up and down or anything. Had been, same thing on the Adveror, but that may always be together. But maybe those three would be interesting to see.
I'll make a motion to dispose the equipment. Second.
Yes.
Uh, index. In inventory purchase agreement.
There was a change. You want to explain it?
We could get, there's a watermark on part of that, but couldn't get it off there, so we... Got a watermark on there.
Resolution to approve county speeds of modification.
Let's put 20 on that too, same thing. I'll explain what I did here. So I had a cemetery road and had old field traffic running down it way too fast, can't get them slowed down. So I went out and posted the road 45 mile an hour. But started doing some Googling. If you Google Oklahoma just unmarked roads, it comes up everything's 55 mile an hour. But when you're entering Alphafa County, it's posted. Every sign entering Alphafa County that unless otherwise posted, it's 45 mile an hour. So I called, first I called Rick and I asked him, I said, where do we get this 45 mile an hour from? He didn't know. So I called Monita, and she, the only one she knew about was when we did a affair on, oh, that laptop.
Five A's.
Five, yeah. Affair, when they did that deal. So then I called Jason at ODOT, and he didn't know. Well, come to find out, back when Chad, Doug, and James Simpson was in office, District Three got real dry down there, and just they had some wrecks on some roads. So they, they put on a resolution back then. That's where that came from. So we have it on file somewheres. Should have, but...
I can't find any of those resolutions or anything. All of mine...
Bruce was actually the... So I don't know if we should do another resolution to post the 45 or just leave it as it is because it's already grandfathered, because it's posted. Coming in anywhere is out of town, it's posted. So, but just to be...
Who'd you say was the commissioners?
Chad, James Simpson, and Doug Merle. And Bruce was the county clerk at that time. So I don't know if we can find it minutes somewheres back or if it's...
Can find it minutes.
Or if it's worth looking for. But somewheres, if there was ever an accident, somebody wanted to depress it, we need to know that... But somewheres, if there was ever an accident, somebody wanted to depress it, we need to know that it actually is forty-five mile an hour. But on unmarked roads. And we could go, we could either do another resolution, which is just double done what's already done. Or we could give her some time to look, maybe, maybe we could find it minutes somewheres where they did it.
Say, I thought it was forty-five mile an hour.
Here it is. But where's the picture, where's the resolution proving that, stating that's what I'm just...
Our, my resolutions for the past ten years are still in files. But I could find very few, I think there's like three, three or four years or the twenty years that he was here that I can find. Those resolutions are supposed to stay and...
Yes.
If it was done in Feeds here and, and my records are still in, the basement has been, had been thrown away. Probably in there.
Well, we're going to the minutes, I mean, the minutes are always there.
And the minutes, because I know, I know that it would have been probably Feeds or just prior.
But I can look for the minutes.
If we can find it, we can use it.
We'll just run back there.
We'll go through again. And then I just want to approve the speed limits change that I did on that, just, just keep it without a hawk.
Sure.
We'll not, we'll not be this week, but I can be sure try to find them next week.
Okay. And if not, we'll just make a new one and do it. Because as far as everybody knows, I posted signs this, this forty-five mile an hour in Alphatah County, but I've always had one. That's what I thought it was. I was just kind of trying to find the paper back then.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution. Second.
All right. Uh, let's see, transfer appropriations from work comp county general to exercise more personal services.
Just now going from work comp to the excise board, we, um, I don't know if you guys are even aware of that. We changed their big salary from fifty dollars a meeting to a hundred dollars a meeting. But you know, like who else can say that their pay was doubled with the county?
Not me.
I know, I know. But anyway, um, that was a new legislation that went into effect in November. You know, when we did the budget at that time, we knew nothing about that. This time I have, has rate, have raised it up for their hundred dollars. Another fifty dollars, but that was an unforeseen thing. I usually try to pad that one, but it wasn't quite padded where they got double the pay.
Uh, resell property fund financial statement.
We, um, did, with the minutes went through the meeting back on June twentieth that Valerie sent through. I did double check the minutes, it was in there. Here's where you, um, you guys didn't sign it, the commissioners at that time signed it. But this one paper here, and I am, in my minutes, it doesn't say anything about this form going through. So the auditors, they come in for a cash audit on Thursday. On Thursday and asked for this and we did not have it. So Valerie asked me, well, what do I do? And I said, well, let's date the minutes went through on six twenty and then we'll have you guys sign it on five fifteen. Just another one of those papers that goes through once a year, it's hard to remember everything.
And the auditors did say they were liking our office and it's a lot better than it has been over the years.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Any other things?
Make a motion with your excitement.